Great, thank you so much, San. Welcome back, everyone. The November 22nd, 2021 meeting of the Seattle City Council will come to order. It's 2:01 PM. I'm Lorena Gonzalez, President of the Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sawant. Councilmember Sawant. Strauss.
Present.
Herbold. Councilmember Herbold.
Here.
Juarez.
Here.
Thank you. Lewis.
Present.
Morales. Mosqueta.
Present.
Peterson.
Present.
Council President Gonzalez.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you so much. Okay.
I am here. Sorry, I wasn't joining quick enough.
That's okay. Councilmember Morales is also here, so it looks like we have eight present. And then just double checking one more time, do we have Councilmember Sawant?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawant. Okay, we are all present.
Thank you. Nine present.
Presentations, I'm not aware of a presentation today, so we'll move to approval of the minutes. The minutes of the city council meeting on November 8th, 2021 have been reviewed. If there's no objection, the minutes will be signed. Hearing no objection, the minutes are being signed. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the minutes? If there is no objection, the introduction and referral calendar will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the introduction and referral calendar is adopted. If there's no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is adopted. Public comment. Colleagues, at this time, we will open the remote public comment period for items on the city council agenda, introduction and referral calendar, and the council's work program. I want to thank everyone for their ongoing patience and cooperation as we continue to operate this remote public comment system. It remains our strong intent to continue to have remote public comment regularly included on our meeting agendas. However, as a reminder, the city council reserves the right to end or eliminate these public comment periods at any point if we deem that the system is being abused or is no longer suitable for allowing our meetings to be conducted efficiently and effectively. I'll moderate the public comment period in the following manner. The public comment period for this meeting is 20 minutes, and each speaker will be given two minutes to speak. Speakers are called upon in the order in which they registered to provide public comment on the council's website. Each speaker must call in from the phone number used for this registration and using the meeting phone number ID and passcode that was emailed to them upon confirmation. This is different than the general meeting list-in-line call-in information. Again, I'll call on each speaker by name and in the order in which you registered on the council's website. If you've not yet registered to speak but would like to, you can sign up before the end of public comment by going to the council's website at seattle.gov/council. The public comment link is also listed on today's agenda. Once I call a speaker's name, staff will unmute the appropriate microphone, and the speaker will hear the automatic prompt if you have been unmuted. This will be the speaker's cue that it is their turn to speak, and the speaker must first press star six to begin speaking. Please begin by stating your name, the item that you are addressing. And as a reminder, public comment should relate to an item on today's agenda, the introduction and referral calendar or the council's work program. Speakers will hear a chime when 10 seconds are left of the allotted time. Once you hear the chime, we ask that you begin to wrap up your public comment. If speakers do not end their comments at the end of the allotted time provided, the speaker's microphone will be muted to allow us to call on the next speaker. Once you are done with your public comment, please disconnect from the line. And if you plan to continue following the meeting, you can do so on Seattle Channel or one of the listening options listed on the agenda. Public comment period is now open, and we'll begin with the first speaker on the list. Again, please remember to press star six after you hear the prompt of you have been unmuted. The first speaker is Howard Gale, followed by Josh Castle and Amarinthea Torres. Howard, welcome.
Good afternoon. Howard Gale, District 7, speaking on the continuing funding of our failed police accountability system. This afternoon, the council will be voting on hiring incentives for police. I'm confused. Isn't Seattle's lack of accountability for police, those who beat protesters and kill people with immunity, isn't that enough incentive? Our accountability system has judged nearly 90% of last year's police abuse cases against demonstrators to be without merit, and the highest punishment needed out has been simply a reprimand and has found every SBD killing investigated so far to be, quote, "lawful and proper," unquote. Why do we have to add to their pay to entice them to do what some police already clearly enjoy? The council will pass a budget that provides well over $10 million to cover up police abuse while refusing to even consider shifting that money towards providing real police accountability. Now, in a clear message to cops, you plan to offer them more money to work here without having to fear accountability. Has it really only taken 18 months for you to abandon what you pretended to have learned post-George Floyd? If the council had the courage to admit the failings of our police accountability system, they could redirect these tens of millions of dollars towards real community oversight of police. We must invest these monies in a system that provides full civilian community control over police policy, misconduct investigations, and discipline as so many cities have done post-George Floyd. Go to seattlestop.org to find out how. That's seattlestop.org. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Josh Castle, followed by Amarinthea Torres, and then David Haynes.
Hi, good afternoon, council members. I'm Josh Castle, Community Engagement Director with Lehigh. Thank you, council members, and your amazing staff for your work on the budget. I want to especially thank Councilmember Herbold for her work to add $380,000 to bring improved amenities and additional tiny houses to Camp Second Chance. Thank you, Councilmember Lewis, for adding another $600,000 in funding to add behavioral health and 24/7 staffing to our villages to help residents in great need of these services. Thank you, Councilmember Mosqueta, for adding these budget proposals and more to the balancing package and your outstanding leadership on Jump Start. Thank you, Councilmember Sawant, for pioneering the push for progressive revenue and taxing big business and billionaires and on advocating for tiny house villages being prioritized. We know these are the most high-quality forms of enhanced shelter and most in demand with the highest rate of exits to permanent housing. Thank you as well, Councilmember Sawant, for your leadership in sponsoring, and Councilmember Morales for co-sponsoring the bridge loan for Squire Park Plaza. And to the two of you respectively, along with, thank you to Councilmember Lewis as an additional co-sponsor of the proposal to fund operations and maintenance of five permanent supportive housing buildings. We appreciate your advocacy for these. Thank you, Councilmember Juarez, for your support and leadership of a tiny house village to serve many of our unsheltered neighbors in District 5. I stopped by Friendship Heights Village this morning, and it's looking gorgeous. Thank you to Councilmember Peterson and to your staff Kara and Malik for your close engagement, advocacy, and support for Rosie's Village to serve many of our unsheltered neighbors in the U District and surrounding neighborhoods. Thank you as well, Councilmember Peterson, for your pies and knitted hats for Rosie's residents, and to Councilmember Strauss for stopping by and dropping off Larson Bakery treats to Winter Heights Village this last weekend. And thank you, Councilmember Morales, for your leadership on tiny house villages and compassionate response to our unsheltered neighbors. I'm proud of you. We appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Thanks for calling in. Josh, next up is Amarinthea Torres, then David Haynes, and then Madeline Olson.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Amarinthea Torres, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Coalition Ending Gender-Based Violence. Our membership is made up of over 35 community-based, culture-specific, and BIPOC-led organizations working for the end of gender-based violence such as sexual assault, rape, and domestic violence. On behalf of our membership, we just wanted to share appreciation for Councilmember Herbold and her leadership on Amendment HFD019B, which adds $1.5 million for community-based survivor-driven advocacy services for survivors of gender-based violence in our city. Additionally, we'd like to thank those who co-sponsored this amendment. Much appreciation to Councilmembers Morales, Peterson, Gonzalez, Sawant, and Strauss for your co-sponsorship of this critical support to survivors. Thank you for seeing the need and showing your support during this tough budget year. I'm excited to see how so many of our programs serving survivors, culture-specific programs, and so many use this support and funding to hire more staff or to offer flexible financial assistance to survivors who need it the most. We also wanted to thank Councilmember Herbold, Councilmember Morales, and Councilmember Lewis for their support of OCR002, which supports a DB stakeholder work group to explore alternatives to incarceration for those accused of misdemeanor domestic violence. This has been an important first step to building alternatives to the criminal legal system. So thank you so much again for all of your work and your time and dedication to gender-based violence and also for the time to speak to you today. Thanks so much.
Thanks for calling in today. Next up is David Haynes, and then Madeline Olson, and then Sylvia Gonzalez.
Thank you. Good afternoon, David Haynes. I live in District 7. I haven't had a proper night's sleep in the seven months that I've lived down here because there's an uncivil war being conducted on the community, and nothing's being done about the crimes that are trying to break in and take over my building. And excuse me for saying this, but city council should reject this racist, treasonous, unconstitutional budget abuse of tax dollars redirecting public safety crisis and homeless crisis money to buy off George Floyd protesters accessing over $70 million, while council co-ops redirects, and I dare say steals, federal emergency COVID funds called Clipper Funds, money meant to solve the homeless crisis for people who can't buy non-congregate COVID-concerned shelter, now instead redirected money to Jump Start taxes manipulated with a spending plan providing middle-class gifts to non-citizens, foreign-born, certain skin color monthly payments, while innocent poor citizens, not a criminal, are purposely not provided 21st century first-world quality shelter because city council instructs Office of Housing and Human Services Department to redirect as much money away from solving the homeless crisis after raising money in the name of the homeless crisis for certain privileged house groups, voting blocs, and nonprofit donors at unions who help with elections. It's unconstitutional to abuse and use federal relief money stolen from the homeless to fill in the general revenue shortfalls created by city council gouging redirecting taxes to pay off protesters hiding within solidarity budget, equitable development initiative, and community safety and community capacity building nonprofits, creating fraudulent community safety. This budget is proof that Democrats use the taxpayers and the homeless crisis to get money that's redirected to the reelection apparatus of activist organizers, Democratic operatives, hiding within all new 17 nonprofits, pocketing millions of dollars to not protest.
Okay, next is Madeline Olson, followed by Sylvia Gonzalez, and then Enshon Burns. Madeline, welcome.
Hi there. Can you hear me okay?
We can. Go ahead.
All right, thanks. Yeah, my name's Madeline. I'm just calling in about the budget. Just calling to say that I'm really excited to see the gains, like full funding for right to counsel, funds going to the clean greens to provide much-needed fresh produce to the central district alongside our funding for the New Hope Housing Family Housing Project. Excuse me, too many words. But yeah, I just want to say this is thanks to the movement-building approach of the Councilmember Sawant and the People's Budget. You know, because of this, we've been able to celebrate these victories. Really excited to see this progress. But you know, overall, really want to say it's really disappointing to see that this budget does fail to meet the needs of working people and our communities. As the pandemic continues, you know, it's not over. We are seeing the world billionaires make trillions of dollars, that's trillions with a T, you know, in profits while regular people are, you know, being buried under increasing amounts of debt, myself included. You know, renters are the majority of folks in Seattle, but rents are on track to increase over 40% this year alone. This is clearly an unsustainable situation. Something has to break. But is it going to be regular working people, or are we going to go ahead and tax big business and billionaires to pay for the pandemic? Similarly, we're seeing continuation of a bloated police budget when we could take, you know, those funds, invest them into our working-class communities, especially Black and Brown communities, to address the actual root causes of our systemic racism and the violence that we see in Seattle. You know, this whole situation really could have been avoided. Councilmember Sawant, the People's Budget and the Solidarity Budget, you know, they've all called for the massive increase of funding towards affordable housing pursuant of $635 million in 2022, as well as an $85 million annually for a Green New Deal. You know, with a modest increase of the Amazon tax, we easily could have paid for these services, you know, the ones that we would need to address the housing environmental crisis that we're facing. Thank you so much, Councilmember Sawant, for championing working people's needs. I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Sylvia Gonzalez, followed by Enshon Burns, and then Colleen McKeeler.
Hola.
Hola, Sylvia.
Hola, buenas tardes. Voy a dar mi testimonio en español. Buenas tardes, miembros del consejo. Mi nombre es Sylvia Gonzalez, trabajadora del hogar, organizadora de campañas para Casa Latina, y copresidenta del Standard Board de las trabajadoras del hogar. Estoy aquí hoy para darle, para agradecer a todos los concejales, en especial a nuestra campeona Teresa Mosqueta, por el apoyo a la resolución para dar paso a una legislación de tiempo libre pagado portátil. Un paso enorme y digno para esta industria y a la vez un ejemplo para otras ciudades en toda la nación. También agradezco a los concejales por mantener intactos los $500,000 para aplicar las recomendaciones del Standard Board, los cuales incluyen la creación de una plataforma portátil de tiempo libre pagado y de días de enfermedad pagados. Mi deseo es poder seguir contando con el apoyo de ustedes para la legislación de los beneficios portátiles en el 2022. Gracias por su compromiso con este sector laboral. Si se pudo.
Okay, gracias, Sylvia, por llamar. Just really quickly, colleagues, I'm gonna just roughly translate what Sylvia Gonzalez said. She is calling in today to talk about the domestic worker portable benefits investments. She's a domestic worker, the co-chair at the Domestic Worker Board, and also an organizer at Casa Latina. She wants to thank all of the council members for the commitment to domestic worker issues, but especially wants to acknowledge the work of their champion, Councilmember Teresa Mosqueta, for putting forth a resolution for establishing portable benefits for domestic workers. She wants to thank the full council for the investments in the Domestic Worker Board recommendations. Wants to continue to be able to count on city council members for our support of the efforts in that space and wants to thank us for the future work that she knows we will do and appreciates everything that we have been able to do thus far. Okay. Thanks, folks. Next is Enshon Burns, followed by Colleen McKeeler, and then Daniel Kavanaugh.
Hi, all. My name's Enshon Burns. At first, I want to agree with the previous commenter. I'm also pretty excited about the gains that have been fought for and may do into the proposed budget this year, and particularly that full funding for the right to counsel for tenants facing eviction, the funding for a fresh produce program in the central district, additional funding for tiny house villages, and a safe parking lot for folks living in their cars. Like, those are all real gains that working people, I feel, can be proud of. And it's the result of fighting over the years through the People's Budget Movement as well as the Renters Rights Movement that emerged this year. But despite all that, I still feel that this budget is woefully inadequate to meet the needs of regular people in Seattle at this moment. Like, rents are still skyrocketing. A recent Census Bureau report found that 60,000 Seattle-area renters are in debt to their landlords. And this is a totally unsustainable situation, forcing people into Kent, into Renton. And this budget could and should have served as the response to increase taxes on the billionaires who have profited off of the pandemic and put funding into real solutions for the housing crisis in response to workers' demands. Like, the Solidarity Budget and the People's Budget, they called for those increases in funding for affordable housing, which could have been done through an increase in the Amazon tax, which is a big numerary increase. But based on the profits that we've seen, like, taxing big business for housing and Green New Deal programs is something that has enormous support in Seattle. And the record profit, excuse me, record profits we've seen this year should not exist at the same time as the housing crisis that's at its worst point in years. Like, the status quo budget that's been put forward is disappointing, given the historic economic and political developments over the last year. I definitely support Councilmember Sawant's intention to vote no on this budget. It's just not something that really meets the moment right now, and I feel, you know, council members to be more receptive to the pressure that we've been putting on them throughout the last couple of years and every perennial council member, or, excuse me, People's Budget Movement. Thank you.
Thanks for calling in. I accidentally called on Colleen, but Colleen is calling in for the Seattle Park District meeting, so she will be on deck for Councilmember Juarez to call on her for her comments. So we will hear from the last individual I have signed up for the city council meeting, and that is Daniel Kavanaugh. I do have William Smith signed up for public comment, but he is, William is showing up, is not present. So, Daniel, welcome.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. My name's Dan. I'm a renter in District 3 in First Hill. I'm an activist with the People's Budget Movement, and I've been active in the Black Lives Matter protests and the Tax Amazon movement last year. And yeah, I, you know, the People's Budget Movement over the years, we've won countless victories. We've won millions in funding for, you know, housing and services with our movement-based fighting approach. This is the eighth consecutive year, you know, this, the People's Budget was first launched by Councilmember Sawant, Socialist Council office alongside, you know, many affordable housing and homeless service advocates. We've won things like millions of dollars in affordable housing, services of a sort of justice, renter organizing, you know, funding for renter organizing and attorney services against eviction. And this year's no different, right? We've won victories this year in the budget, like additional funding for renter organizing. Thank you to the Tenant Union of D.C. We've won full funding for the right to counsel, which our movement won the right to earlier this year, which is one of the first of several victories of our Renters Rights Movement movements won this year, including six-month notice for rent increases, just cause protection for renters at the end of a fixed-term lease, relocation assistance, you know, ban on school year evictions. And so, you know, our movement should feel really proud of what we've won. But, you know, this still is a business-as-usual budget on the whole that doesn't meet working people's needs and ultimately is totally inadequate. Right? And, you know, others have spoken to how, you know, billionaires have gotten trillions, trillions of dollars richer in the past year, and working-class people are struggling more than ever, right? Are in debt to their landlords, you know, are, you know, falling behind on rent. In this context, you know, a business-as-usual budget is unacceptable. I really want to thank Councilmember Sawant and the People's Budget Movement for fighting for the maximum possible funds for working-class people out of this budget while also voting no on this business.
Okay, the last person again that I have signed up but not present is William Smith, checking in with our IT folks to make sure no one else is waiting in the waiting room.
There are no more public comment registrants.
Thank you, San. Appreciate it. We will move to other items of business on the agenda. First up is payment of the bills. Will the clerk please read the title?
Payment of bills, Council Bill 120229, An Ordnance Appropriating Money to Pay Certain Audited Claims for the Week of November 8th, 2021 through November 12th, 2021, and ordering the payment thereof.
Thank you so much. I move to pass Council Bill 120229. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. Are there any comments? Hearing no comments. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Sawant? Yes. Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Mosqueta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
Thank you so much. The bill passes, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read item one into the record?
Report the city council agenda, item one, Council Bill 120210, An Ordnance Relating to the Department of Finance and Administrative Services, Authorizing the Director of the Department of Finance and Administrative Services, or the Director's Designee, to Negotiate and Execute a Real Property Lease Renewal with the United States Army for the City of Seattle's Continued interim Use and Occupancy of 33.95 acres at the Fort Lawton Army Reserve Center and Ratifying and Confirming Certain Prior Acts.
Thank you so much. I move to pass Council Bill 120210. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. I'm going to hand it over to Councilmember Mosqueta, who's the sponsor of the bill and who has a amendment for our consideration.
Thank you very much, Council President. I move to amend Council Bill 120210 by substituting version two for version D1A, substituting attachment one, substituting exhibits B, C, E, and F to attachment one. All was presented in the agenda and by removing exhibits G and H.
Second. Thank you so much. It's been moved and seconded to amend the council bill. Councilmember Mosqueta, anything else you would like to say to address these amendments?
Thank you very much, Council President. Colleagues, this legislation authorizes Finance and Administrative Services to execute, excuse me, to execute a one-year lease agreement with four one-year extensions for the Fort Lawton site currently owned by the US Army, while the City of Seattle's application to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development continues to go through its process for approval and the redevelopment plan to create affordable housing, open space, and habitat. As a reminder, Fort Lawton Project, approved by council, will create 85 supportive housing units for older adults, including veterans who've experienced homelessness. 100 units that will include one, two, and three, four, one, two, and three-bedroom flats or row houses for renters with incomes up to 60% of the area median income. It will include 50 three-bedroom permanently affordable housing, row houses, or, and townhomes for households with incomes up to 80% AMI. This is all included around an athletic field, forest land, and parkland. This lease agreement authorized by this legislation will allow the city to use the property in the interim while we await approval from HUD and make sure that we can continue towards our long-term redevelopment plan. The city doesn't pay a fee to the US Army, but it is responsible for all holding and caretaking costs associated with the property, which are covered equally by the Office of Housing and Parks and Recreation Department. We look forward to working with the administration and to seek approval from HUD for the Fort Lawton redevelopment plan. Very excited about this, but this is an interim step today. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, any additional comments on the amendments? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the amendments?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Mosqueta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
Motion carries, and the amendments are adopted. Are there any additional comments on the bill as amended? I'm not seeing any hands raised, so will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill as amended?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Mosqueta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
The bill passes as amended, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Okay, council members, the Select Budget Committee report consists of 33 items of business this afternoon. Council members will be provided an opportunity to make comments on each item before I request the clerk to call the roll, as is our usual practice. Before we begin, I am going to recognize Councilmember Mosqueta to provide a brief report on the Select Budget Committee as a whole. And again, this is, this will be an opportunity for our Select Budget Committee Chair to just do some table setting and, and some overview of the following 33 items. And, and council members will be allowed to speak as to each individual item, per usual. And of course, there'll be an opportunity before the end for council members to make more generalized comments. So I'm going to hand it over to Councilmember Mosqueta to give us some introductory remarks before we go down the path of considering each of the 33 pieces of legislation related to our 2022 budget. Councilmember Mosqueta, please.
Thank you very much, Madam President. As Councilmember Juarez noted this morning, we did do a number of thank yous, so I appreciate the opportunity to have said thank you to all of your offices, all of the folks in the Legislative Department and the community at large who have helped to get us to this day where we have a proposed budget in front of us for consideration. Thank you, Council President, for allowing me some additional time this morning, excuse me, this afternoon, to set the tone as we consider these amendments in front of us. I do have a number of comments, and I want to offer these to you as one rolled-up set of discussion talking points so that I won't be speaking to each one of these items that is below in the agenda. But I did want to say thank you. Thank you, colleagues, for all of the work that you've done over the last eight weeks to get us to this process. You have put in front of us a proposed budget that centers investments in housing and homeless services, investments in communities that are thriving and resilient local economies, in building healthy and safe communities. We started this proposed budget discussion about eight weeks ago, reviewing a proposed budget that included investments into various categories. And today, in front of us, we have changed some of the funding sources to And today in front of us, we have changed some of the funding sources to make sure that we have truly kept true to our Jump Start Spending Plan priorities. We unanimously passed the spend plan and today's budget in front of us invests those dollars from Jump Start into the promised housing, equitable development, Green New Deal, and economic resilience categories. I want to thank all of you for all of the work that you've done as we've worked throughout the last two years to respond to the crisis that has been presented and made worse by COVID, as we consider progressive revenue that today is allowing for us to have a shortfall of only 15 million, which would have been much more drastic had we not been able to rely on the proceeds from Jump Start Progressive Revenue that will begin coming to the city early next year. Despite the economic volatility that we see in our country right now and working to make, we are working to make sure that we are opening up our city, that we are caring for our most vulnerable, that we are investing in what makes our city resilient, diverse, and thriving. And I really appreciate all of the work that you all have done to make sure that the investments in front of us reflect that we have made investments into core government services, supporting our most vulnerable while being responsible to maintaining our fiscal reserves. Madam President, I'll just highlight five categories that this budget invests in. The first starts with affordable housing. This budget makes a historic investment in affordable housing to the tune of $194 million, made possible with an infusion of $97 million from Jump Start Progressive Revenue, dollars going directly into rental housing, serving the most lowest-income, community-focused acquisition and homeownership opportunities. These investments allow the city to help people exit chronic homelessness, invest in community ownership of land and housing coupled with services led by BIPOC community organizations, serving those who are most at risk of displacement, who have been historically priced out and kept out of the housing market, and who today are most impacted by the impacts of COVID. These are important investments in affordable housing that total around 165 million of that total going into creation of new affordable housing, rental housing units, and about twice the amount of investments going into the previous year for shovel-ready projects to leverage available state and federal dollars. 15.7 million is going into acquisition and development for communities at risk of displacement, and 10.6 million of that 194 is going to permanently affordable homeownership opportunities. We have included incred- we have included language to make sure that we have built upon the notice of intent legislation. You heard Councilmember Morales this morning talk about the ways in which we could create more opportunities for those who are currently renters to be able to purchase one day. There is a sly included in this budget to reflect the new provision under the 2019 Washington State Supreme Court ruling, paving the way for the city to consider the imposition of a right of first refusal and recommendations within the city auditor report that was commissioned in 2019 related to our Notice of Intent to Sell ordinance that I sponsored. I'm excited about the opportunities that are presenting themselves as we consider what it looks like to have a more affordable rental units, as we consider the conversation around what social housing could be. The sly helps also direct SDCI and Office of Housing to work with the council over the part, over the first part of next year to consider policy considerations, enhancements of enforcement, strengthening provisions for first right of refusal for our tenant and, and building a Tenant Opportunity to Purchase Act. That all helps move towards the direction of creating greater home options for folks to be able to have affordable housing and to build towards the goal of every person in this city having access to housing as a human right. In planning and infrastructure, this council has prioritized investments in this budget that recognizes the need to plan for the future with over $2 million of investments going into climate resilience, in addition to 14 million in investments from the Green New Deal priorities that are made possible from Jump Start, and invest into planning for our neighborhood business districts, housing and green spaces, and future transportation systems to the tune of $12 million in transportation projects focused on maintaining or enhancing transportation infrastructure, safer streets for people walking and biking, and expanding mobility access for all abilities, ages, ethnicities, genders, races, and and everyone to be able to have the layer of vision of activating our public spaces and creating connected cities. The budget includes the needed planning to make sure that we build the bridges to connect our city, that we put funding forward for the Department of Transportation to bring more projects to 30% design and more, to make sure that they're shovel-ready, ready for those dollars from the federal government and the state so that we can couple those dollars with any dollars the city decides to bond against. We've authorized the city to bond up to $100 million to help invest in creating a bridge infrastructure that meets our city's needs and keeps those bridges open. In community safety investments, we're building on the important work that this council has continued to commit to to make sure that we are investing in community strategies to create trusted community partnerships that can help reduce gun violence, reduce, reduce youth violence, to address the needs in our community, to make sure more mental health service providers are out there, more community safety officers are out there. We are doing this in addition to investments into the Seattle Police Department that helps stabilize the department and create necessary investments as deemed necessary by the consent decree to make sure that we are enhancing technology. We are including 26 positions in the Community Safety and Communications Center to address the existing 911 dispatch operational needs. We are investing $2.5 million to expand the Mobile Mental Health and Behavioral Health Crisis Services. The council's investing $3.9 million into making sure that we're intervening into the criminal justice system and looking at pre-arrest and pre-booking diversion programs that allow for people to be redirected away from jail and, and have healthier outcomes. We are investing $10.4 million for organizations that we have worked with the mayor's office on towards getting dollars out this year and next year. This will continue through community-led solutions to end violence and increase BIPOC community investments through the community safety grants that went out just earlier this year. This is all happening in addition to making sure that we have fully funded the hiring plan that the Seattle Police Department has asked for. Seattle Police Department, along with the mayor's proposed budget, asked for an additional 125 new officers to be fully funded for their hiring plan. This budget includes that. This budget includes no cuts to current SPD staffing, no cuts to SPD officers, no cuts to salaries in this proposed budget. It does utilize underspend and unused salary savings to invest in things that the mayor's office had also indicated interest in. We are now investing in the expanded Community Safety Officer Unit, creating six new additional staff members in addition to the 18 that we've already authorized and fund. We are expanding technology investments to the tune of $3.8 million so that we have the systems needed to connect systems behind the scenes and create greater efficiencies. We have invested an additional $4.6 million in overtime, now totaling $26.4 million for overtime for next year. We've invested $4.1 million in this budget and maintained discretionary purposes for the current budget and also near $1 million for travel and training above the current budget. I want to be very clear, though. As we head into early 2022, we will continue to work to address issues that may present themselves and working with the next administration and the department to make sure that if there are needs that continue to materialize, that we're working with the underspend that may present itself in 2021. There is a commitment, as I have done over the last two years as your budget chair, to make sure that in this moment, when we have so many crises that are facing the city, if there are dollars that are made available, we want to make sure that those are getting out the door to meet those needs now. I look forward to working in early 2022 to address any additional unmet needs and if there is underspend, that we work together in a collaborative way to make sure that we are all working towards creating healthy, safe communities for all. That's why the investments in community safety-oriented solutions, along with making sure that we invested in many of the areas identified by the mayor in her proposed budget for new investments, have been also included. And I'll conclude with this, Madam President. In economic resilience, we are investing in businesses, in arts and culture. The adopted budget reflects an ongoing need to make sure that our smallest businesses, that our arts and cultural community have investments that they need for long-lasting, vibrant economy and a thriving local economic hub. $24 million is going into economic recovery and resilience investments that will continue equitable, creative, culturally-appropriate opportunities and entrepreneurship. We are investing $650,000 in technology equity program, $300,000 to support economic opportunities for refugees and immigrant women-owned businesses, investments in Northgate to support Business District cohesion and resilience, investments in BIPOC-owned businesses in Lake City, investments in pre-employment and job readiness program, including workforce development for youth experiencing homelessness, investments in childcare facilities, investments in workforce development strategies. All of this as we create the Renaissance that we, Council President and I and the mayor talked about earlier this year. We have expanded upon that with $6 million for arts, youth, and education investments and making sure that our city has the opportunity for everyone to live here, have access to good living wage jobs, create their own small business, and that we've invested in the care needed for our most vulnerable, from our youth to our seniors. I'm proud of the investments you as a council have made into food, housing, shelter, small business support, and community safety and healthy resilient communities in the wake of COVID. I thank you for all of your work. And with that, Council President, that will summarize all of my comments for the next items, I believe.
Thank you, Councilmember Mosqueta. I appreciate your hard work. All right, colleagues, we're going to go ahead and get started on the 33 items related to the budget for 2022. Will the clerk please read the title of item two into the record?
Agenda item two, Council Bill 120220, an ordinance authorizing in 2021 acceptance of funding from non-city sources, authorizing the heads of the Executive Department, Department of Education and Early Learning, Human Services Department, Department of Transportation, Seattle Public Library, Fire Department, City Attorney's Office, Seattle Center, Seattle Parks and Recreation, and Police Department to accept specified grants, private funding, and subsidized loans and to execute, deliver, and perform corresponding agreements and ratifying and confirming certain prior acts. The committee recommends City Council, City Council pass the council bill with council members Mosqueta, Herbold, Gonzalez, Juarez, Lewis, Morales, and Strauss in favor and Councilmember Peterson abstaining.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any additional comments on the bill? Hearing no additional comments on the bill, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Mosqueta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read the title of item three into the record?
Agenda item three, Council Bill 120221, an ordinance amending ordinance 126237, which adopted the 2021 budget, including the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program, CIP. The committee recommends the bill passes amended.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments on the bill? Councilmember Sawant, please.
Sorry, just finding my place here. I will, I will be voting no on this 2021 year-end supplemental budget. Unfortunately, because this vote is coinciding with the votes on the total city budget for next year, it has not received the attention it needs. As in previous years, there are many elements of this supplemental budget that I have no objection to, but there are some aspects that are very objectionable, and for that reason, I will be voting no. This supplemental budget increases the police budget for this year 2021 by a total of $6,333,540. How can the police complain of hundreds, hundreds of vacancies and a reduced payroll on the one hand and demand millions more dollars in mad money on the other? It makes no sense. Some of that increased funding comes from the general fund and would better be spent on housing, Green New Deal programs, and social services. Other funding comes from federal grants, and some of those grants are particularly ominous because it includes grants from the FBI and from Homeland Security for the so-called joint operations that have been used in the past to criminalize dissent like the way peaceful Black Lives Matter protesters were arrested and investigated by federal officers in the Justice for George Floyd movement last year. For those reasons, I will be voting no on this supplemental budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawant. Are there, excuse me, any additional comments? Any additional comments? Any additional comments on the bill? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Sawant?
No.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Mosqueta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Eight in favor, one opposed.
The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read the title of item four into the record?
Agenda item four, Council Bill 120040, an ordinance amending ordinance 126000, which adopted the 2020 budget, including the 2020 through 2025 CIP, changing appropriations to various departments and budget control levels and from various funds in the budget, and ratifying and confirming certain prior acts all by three-quarter vote of the city council. The committee recommends the city council pass the council bill with council members Mosqueta, Herbold, Gonzalez, Juarez, Lewis, Morales, and Strauss in favor and Councilmember Peterson abstaining.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any additional comments on the bill? Any additional comments? Last time, any additional comments on the bill? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Mosqueta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read the title of item five into the record?
Agenda item five, Resolution 32026, resolution requesting King County and the state of Washington to increase services to address behavioral health conditions. The committee recommends that the city council adopt as amended the resolution.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments on the resolution? Councilmember Strauss, please.
Thank you, Council President. This is more point of order for as we are voting. If, when you request the clerk to call the roll, can you call the item in which we are voting for? I'm following along on the agenda. I just know there's so much we're voting on today.
Sure.
Thank you.
Councilmember Herbold, please.
Thank you so much. Just a couple words on this resolution. We all know that the impact of the pandemic on our mental health has been undeniable over the last year and a half. The unprecedented anxiety, pain, and isolation of the past year and a half have led to negative mental health impacts and occasionally interrupting into abuse, self-harm, gunfire, assault, and other forms of violence. I want to note that this lack of adequate mental health resources is felt by Seattle residents every day. Funding our behavioral health system is primarily a county and state responsibility. I'm pleased that our partners at King County are supportive of an aligned path that leads to better support for Seattle residents that are struggling with behavioral health challenges. City is willing to do our part, and we're looking forward to the county leading the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbold. Are there any additional comments on Resolution 32026, Agenda item five? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of Resolution 32026, Agenda item five?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Mosqueta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Resolution 32026, Agenda item five, is adopted and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read the title of item six into the record?
Agenda item six, Resolution 32027, a resolution modifying the Merrill Civil Emergency Order of October 29th, 2021, related to hiring incentives for public safety emerg- Related to hiring incentives for public safety emergency response. The committee recommends the city council adopt as amended the resolution. With council members Herbold, Gonzalez, Lewis and Morales in favor. Councilmembers Muscat and Sawant opposed. And councilmembers Juarez, Peterson and Strauss abstaining.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any comments on Resolution 32027, Agenda Item Six? Councilmember Herbold, please.
Thank you so much. As noted by the clerk, this was approved in the Budget Committee. By a four to vote with three abstentions. The CBA and the resolution. Are intended to amend the mayor's emergency order on hiring incentives to first limit. The duration of the emergency order through the end of 2021. And secondly, to limit expenditures pursuant to the order. $500,000 in 2021. Is the amount that the mayor's office estimates would be needed in 2021. The resolution works in conjunction with a budget action in the chair's balancing package. Which requests a report from the city budget office to the council on a potential citywide hiring incentive. For frontline workers beyond those covered in the mayor's current emergency order extending. Those incentives to, to recruits to departments beyond SPD. And the Community Safety Communication Center. Item leaves in place mayor's current executive order regarding hiring bonuses for police officer and 911 dispatch. There's through the end of 2021. Some of you may recall that there is another proposal, not on the agenda today, to limit the hiring incentives. To only CSCC recruits and not permit the incentives for SPD recruits. If the vote in favor of this action today does not prevail. We will very likely see the other proposal before us at our next meeting. Given that this proposal is related to an executive order promulgated. By Mayor Durkin, I believe it's appropriate for the executive order end, end of her term. Regardless which action amending Mayor Durkin's executive order fails. Incoming elect, incoming mayor-elect Harrell could issue a new executive order in 2022. I support the important work of all of our city departments and I recognize the difficulty. Many are having filling vacancies in this labor market. And the impact on the delivery of civil, of, of public services and the impact on, on morale in each of these departments. And for that reason, I for one would strongly prefer have a 2022 conversation. About which departments in need we could add bonus incentives for. Rather than having renewed conversations both this year. And again in next year about excluding SPD officer recruits. Finally, as a reminder, in the balancing package before us, there is no funding for bonuses in 2022. Consequently, given those funds are not in the 2022 budget. It's more important than ever that if we're going to have a bonus program in 2022. We have deliberations about how to fund it before authorizing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbold. Councilmember Peterson, please.
Thank you, Council President. I thank you, Councilmember Herbold for that. I support Mayor Durkin's executive order for hiring incentives. And it seems to have achieved some early success. I believe these hiring incentives are needed after the alarming spike in. The number of police officers and 911 dispatchers leaving their positions. At the same time, I agree that today's suggested modifications of the executive order from our Public Safety Chair are reasonable. And fiscally prudent as they allow the hiring incentives to continue to the end of this year. And while the council unfortunately did not approve hiring incentives as part of our fall budget process for next year, 2022. Today's action still leaves the door open for the incoming administration to reissue a similar executive order if needed. As Seattle competes with other jurisdictions across the nation for emergency response personnel. I would encourage the incoming administration in January to do what it can. And not only to hire police officers and firefighters and 911 dispatchers, but also to retain. These valuable employees that we already have so they continue to serve Seattle. So I'll be voting for this, these modifications. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Councilmember Sawant?
Thank you. On October 29th, Mayor Durkin issued an emergency order to reinstate hiring bonuses of up to $25,000 for new police officers. Ironically, her excuse for this emergency order was to give police even more money. Because of the COVID-19 emergency. In other words, even though so many police officers are actually endangering the public by refusing to be vaccinated or to wear masks. They still apparently need to be given more money. Mayor Durkin has shown a shocking double standard when she advocated for hiring bonuses in the Seattle Police Department. The police are some of the highest paid city of Seattle employees. Making more than double what is paid to social workers like homeless service workers. The mayor has claimed in the past that she could not, that she could. She could not open homeless shelters and tiny house villages because there are not enough homeless service workers to staff new spaces. Where are the hiring bonuses then are just decent living standards for impoverished homeless service workers? Who actually help people turn their lives around. Most importantly, the size of the police budget is not what has a statistical impact. On the amount of crime in a community and that includes police officer salaries as well, not having a statistical impact on public safety. I apologize for my dog. It is reducing inequality and providing affordable housing and living wage jobs. And affordable services, including childcare, that has the greatest statistical impact. I absolutely share the concerns that working people have about the rise in gun violence. There is no question that we do need to address this. But if you look at the data, you will see that this is happening even though the police budget has been bloated for many years. While the social services and affordable housing that working people, oppressed communities and the poor need. Continue to be gravely underfunded and at the same time. Rents by corporate, corporate landlords are skyrocketing. Studies show overwhelmingly the best and really only solution to public safety issues is to fund the needs of our society. To address crime and particularly to stop crimes before they even happen. We need to fund affordable housing, social housing that is publicly owned, high quality affordable housing. Funded by taxing big businesses and the wealthy. We need to raise wages and, and exploitation, not increase repression. We need an elected community oversight committee with full powers over the police. On November 8th, my office introduced legislation to modify the mayor's executive order, which would stop the implementation of the police hiring bonuses. That the council voted on. Voted in September against implementing twice. My legislation left in place the hiring bonuses for 911 operators. However, rather than bringing that legislation to a vote, it was delayed by two weeks to give the political establishment the opportunity. To bring alternate legislation through the budget committee that essentially approves the mayor's executive order. Which is the bill in front of us today. I am confused how this bill, which does not amend. One word or number in the budget was treated as budget legislation, but regardless, it is the bill in front of us today. This bill approves Durkin's executive order on hiring bonuses for the duration of her term. In my view, those hiring bonuses are. A terrible misuse of city resources that should be used for affordable housing, social services. And for the needs of our communities. So I will be voting no on this resolution. If the majority of the council agrees with me and votes no on this emergency order. I hope the council will consider to schedule, will agree to schedule the resolution from my office rejecting the mayor's emergency order for a vote. Next Monday. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawant. Are there any additional comments on item six, which is Resolution 32027? Councilmember Herbold, you have the last word.
Thank you. I'm just a couple of points. For the viewing public, I just want to advise that the mayor's office has confirmed that funding is available. Throughout, during 2021 to implement the executive order. I have requested an update from the mayor's office on the implementation of the vaccine mandate as it pertains to police officers and 911 dispatchers. I'm confused as to Councilmember Sawant's reference of the vaccine mandate and the fact. That officers haven't complied as a reason for why a hiring incentive. For departments that, who, for whom their management is enforcing the vaccine mandate. I think, I mean, I think that is what is partially creating the need for hiring incentives. Is to support the officers in one case and the 911 dispatchers in the other case. Who have complied and who are, are still with the city, still performing public service. And are working in departments that have large vacancies. So I really see the. The allowance of, of hiring incentives through the end of this year as really being part and parcel. Of supporting the enforcement of the vaccine mandate. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Herbold. Okay, with that, debate is now closed on this particular agenda item. So will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of Resolution 32027, Agenda Item Six?
Sawant?
No.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Muscat?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Eight in favor, one opposed.
The resolution is adopted and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please fix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will clerk, please read the title of item seven into the record?
Agenda item seven, Resolution 32028. A resolution concerning the health, well-being and safety of domestic workers. Expressing council's intent to establish a right to portable paid time off for domestic workers in Seattle. And requesting the Office of Labor Standards to work with community stakeholders. To draft legislation creating a portable policy for domestic workers. The committee recommends the city council adopt the resolution. With council members Muscat, Herbold, Gonzalez, Juarez, Lewis, Morales and Strauss in favor. And council member Peterson abstaining.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Are there any comments on Resolution 32028, Agenda Item Seven? Councilwoman Muscat?
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I'm excited about this resolution as a corresponding piece of legislation to pass today along with the budget. The COVID-19 pandemic really has amplified the inequities that are inherent in our current treatment of frontline essential workers. This inequity that we are seeing across many industries exponentially. Impacts communities of color, workers of color. And there has been a clear impact on domestic workers as well. I am excited about the legislation in front of us that will continue the path of good policymaking that's rooted in community experience. Rooted in the experience of those who are the frontline workers themselves, in this case, domestic workers. This piece of legislation builds on the $500,000 that the mayor also included in her proposed budget. That the council is continuing to include in our proposed budget. And works on policy development in collaboration with community partners such as the Domestic Worker Standards Board. And the Portable Benefits Coalition. To develop policy to expand upon the benefits of the Domestic Workers' Bill of Rights codified two years ago. We all believe that workers deserve respect and all worker, on all work should have dignity. And the legislation in front of us that corresponds with ongoing conversations throughout next year. Will allow for us as a city, as a city family to develop in partnership with community, a policy that. Outlines how to ensure there's paid time off for caregivers and their families. So that they can care for their kiddos and their elders as well. No worker should be forced to choose between working while sick or facing lost wages. But until we ensure that there is a paid time off policy that can correspond to. The work of domestic work, which has many different hiring entities often. We are in a situation where disparity continues. I look forward to continuing to work with community partners. And hearing more from cities like San Francisco and Philadelphia. Who have passed or are considering ordinances granting the right for paid time off to domestic workers. Those cities are currently working on legislation and implementation to make sure that this commitment is a reality. I really love that we are on the national stage for all of the work that you all supported with the Domestic Workers' Bill of Rights. That national conversation continues to center around how domestic workers have a clear path to paid leave when they need it. So thank you all for your consideration of this resolution in front of us today. Which is really about the ongoing work that we will commit to in 2022. With community as, and this correlates to the $500,000 included in the 2022 budget process for. Other aspects which include doing outreach engagement with hiring entities, community partners and the necessary work for education and enforcement. I look forward to hearing more in 2022 as we develop this policy together.
Thank you, Councilwoman Muscat. Are there any additional comments on Resolution 32028, Agenda Item Seven?
Wanted. Wanted to thank Madam President.
One more, one more time, Councilwoman Muscat. Go ahead.
Just wanted to thank Lori Matthew, who's in our office, legislative intern. Who has been really leading the effort on this. So thank her and Karina Bull and the Office of Labor Standards for their deep engagement. With community partners, including the Portable Benefits Coalition and shout out to them as they continue to call in and express support for this. So thank you all.
Anything else? All right. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of Resolution 32028, Agenda Item Seven?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez? Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Muscat?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. Resolution 32028, Agenda Item Seven is adopted and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read the title of item eight into the record?
Agenda item eight, Clerk File 314487, the 2022 proposed budget. The committee recommends city council file the clerk file. With council members Muscat, Herbold, Gonzalez, Juarez, Lewis, Morales and Strauss in favor and council member Peterson abstaining.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments on Clerk File 314487, Agenda Item Eight? Councilmember Herbold?
Madam Chair, just wondering what your preference is for council member comments. I appreciate that. Budget Chair Muscat spoke at the top of the agenda. I've just been wondering if there is a particular item. There's this clerk file and there's another one also adopting the budget. Just wondering what your preference is.
Sorry, I said up to you. Everyone gets one bite at the apple, however. So if you want to bite the apple now, you can bite it now. Or if you want to hold on until there's the big omnibus bill towards the end, then you can do that as well.
And so what is the big omnibus bill at the end? What number is that?
It's item 32, I believe.
That's what I was thinking. I was quickly trying to scroll down. It's a very long script. So give me a second. Let me confirm.
I will, in the interest of getting through this, I'm going to hold mine.
Okay, it is, it is item 32. That adopts the entirety of the budget. This, of course, is just a clerk file. You're going to hold. Okay, I gotta, I gotta scroll back up. Give me a minute. All right, back to Agenda Item Eight. Again, are there any comments on Clerk File 314487, Agenda Item Eight? All right, hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on placing the clerk file? That's Clerk File 314487, Agenda Item Eight on file.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold? Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Muscat?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
The motion carries and the. The motion carries and the Clerk File is placed on file. Will the clerk please read the title of item nine into the record?
Agenda item nine, Clerk File 314486, the 2022 through 2027 Proposed Capital Improvement Program. The committee recommends the City Council file the Clerk File with Councilmembers Musceta, Herbold, Gonzalez, Juarez, Lewis, Morales, and Strauss in favor, and Councilmember Peterson abstaining.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments on Clerk File 314486, Agenda Item 9? Any comments on Agenda Item 9? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on placing Clerk File 314486, Agenda Item 9, on file?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Musceta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
The motion carries and the Clerk File is approved and placed on file. Will the clerk please read the title of item 10 into the record?
Agenda item 10, Council Bill 120189, an ordinance relating to the 2022 budget authorizing department directors to accept anticipated future grants and enter into revenue-backed service contracts to support appropriations in the 2022 budget. The committee recommends City Council pass the Council Bill with Councilmembers Musceta, Herbold, Gonzalez, Juarez, Lewis, Morales, and Strauss in favor, and Councilmember Peterson abstaining.
Thank you. Are there any comments on Council Bill 120189, Agenda Item 10? Looking for comments on Agenda Item 10, if there are any? All right, not seeing any hands raised. So will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of Council Bill 120189, Agenda Item 10?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Musceta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
Thank you so much. Will the clerk please read the title of item 11 into the record?
Agenda item 11, Resolution 32024, a resolution adopting revised financial policies for the emergency fund. The committee recommends City Council adopt the resolution with Councilmembers Musceta, Herbold, Gonzalez, Juarez, Lewis, Morales, and Strauss in favor, Councilmember Peterson abstaining.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments on Resolution 32024, Agenda Item 11? Agenda item 11, any comments on Agenda Item 11? Okay, hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of Resolution 32024, Agenda Item 11?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Musceta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Resolution 32024, Agenda Item 11, is adopted and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read the title of item 12 into the record?
Agenda item 12, Council Bill 120190, an ordinance relating to fees and charges for permits and activities of the Seattle Department of Construction and Inspections, related fees by the other departments, and technical corrections. The committee recommends City Council pass the Council Bill with Councilmembers Musceta, Herbold, Gonzalez, Juarez, Lewis, Morales, and Strauss in favor, and Councilmember Peterson abstaining.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments on Council Bill 120190, Agenda Item 12? Agenda item 12, any comments on that Council Bill? Not seeing any hands raised. So will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of Council Bill 120190, Agenda Item 12?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold? Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Musceta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
Council Bill 120190, which is Agenda Item 12, passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read the title of item 13 into the record?
Agenda item 13, Council Bill 120191, an ordinance relating to street and sidewalk use, amending the street use fee schedule authorized by Section 15.04.074 of the Seattle Municipal Code and ratifying and confirming certain prior acts. The committee recommends the bill pass with Councilmembers Musceta, Herbold, Gonzalez, Juarez, Lewis, Morales, and Strauss in favor, and Council Peterson abstaining.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments on Council Bill 120191, Agenda Item 13? Any comments on Agenda Item 13, which is Council Bill 120191? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of Council Bill 120191, Agenda Item 13?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Musceta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
Thank you so much. Council Bill 120191, Agenda Item 13, passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read the title of item 14 into the record?
Agenda item 14, Council Bill 120192, an ordinance relating to the Department of Parks and Recreation establishing the 2022 fee schedule for the use of park properties and other park and recreation facilities and services and superseding previous park and recreation fee schedules. The committee recommends the City Council pass the Council Bill with Councilmembers Musceta, Herbold, Gonzalez, Juarez, Lewis, Morales, and Strauss in favor, and Councilmember Peterson abstaining.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments on Council Bill 120192, Agenda Item 14? Agenda item 14, looking for any comments on Agenda Item 14? I don't see any hands raised. So will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of Council Bill 120192, Agenda Item 14?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Musceta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
Thank you so much. Council Bill 120192, Agenda Item 14, passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read the title of item 15 into the record?
Agenda item 15, Council Bill 120193, an ordinance relating to Seattle Parks and Recreation authorizing an administrative amendment to Ordinance 115859, which established the Beach Maintenance Trust Fund as a subsidiary fund of the Shoreline Park Improvement Fund, which fund was established by Ordinance 115496 as part of the settlement agreement with the municipality of metropolitan, excuse me, municipality of Metropolitan Seattle for the construction of the West Point and Alki Secondary Sewerage Projects, and which expired in January 2011. The committee recommends City Council pass the bill. Councilmembers Musceta, Herbold, Gonzalez, Juarez, Lewis, Morales, and Strauss in favor, and Councilmember Peterson abstaining.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments on Council Bill 120193, Agenda Item 15? We are on Agenda Item 15, any comments? Hearing no comments, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of Council Bill 120193, Agenda Item 15?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Musceta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
Council Bill 120193, Agenda Item 15, passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read the title of item 16 into the record?
Agenda item 16, Council Bill 120194, an ordinance relating to King County Conservation Futures Levy Proceeds, authorizing the mayor to enter into a new interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Seattle and King County to allow for the acceptance of conservation futures levy funds, authorizing the deposit of 2020 and 2021 allocations from King County Conservation Futures Levy Proceeds into the City of Seattle's park funds. The committee recommends the City Council pass the bill, Councilmembers Musceta, Herbold, Gonzalez, Juarez, Lewis, Morales, and Strauss in favor, and Councilmember Peterson abstaining.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments on Council Bill 120194, Agenda Item 16? Here are now on Agenda Item 16, any comments on Council Bill 120194? Hearing no comments, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of Council Bill 120194, Agenda Item 16?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Musceta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
Thank you so much. Council Bill 120194, Agenda Item 16, passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read the title of Agenda Item 17 into the record?
Agenda item 17, Council Bill 120195, an ordinance relating to the financing of the Finance and Administrative Services Fund, authorizing inter-fund loans up to a total of $8 million from the Fleet Capital Fund and $2 million from the Wheelchair Accessibility Fund to the Finance and Administrative Services Fund for financing of FEMA-eligible COVID-19 response expenses.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move to pass Council Bill 120195. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any additional comments on Council Bill 120195, Agenda Item 17? Any additional comments on Agenda Item 17? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of Council Bill 120195, Agenda Item 17?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Musceta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
Council Bill 120195, Agenda Item 17, passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read the short title of item 18 into the record?
Agenda item 18, Council Bill 120198, an ordinance relating to contracting indebtedness, authorizing and providing for the issuance and sale of limited tax general obligation bonds to pay for all or part of the costs of various elements of the city's capital improvement program. The committee recommends the Council pass the Council Bill with Councilmembers Musceta, Herbold, Gonzalez, Juarez, Lewis, Morales, and Peterson in favor, and Councilmember Strauss abstaining.
Thank you so much. Okay, are there any comments? Excuse me, are there any comments on Council Bill 120198, Agenda Item 18? We're now on Agenda Item 18, any comments? Councilmember Strauss?
Thank you, Council President. Just very excited to vote for this. The abstention in committee was a technical issue. Much like I'm requesting you to read out the numbers, I was unsure of where we were in that agenda. I'm just very excited to vote yesterday. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Strauss. I know we have a lot on the agenda. Appreciate your, your encouragement to go a little bit slower so that all of us, including the viewing public, can stay on track. Okay, so any additional comments on Council Bill 120198, Agenda Item 18? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of Council Bill 120198, Agenda Item 18?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Lewis, or, excuse me. Councilmember Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Musceta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
Thank you so much. Council Bill 120198, Agenda Item 18, passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read the short title of item 19 into the record?
Agenda item 19, Council Bill 120224, an ordinance relating to contracting indebtedness, authorizing and providing for the issuance and sale of limited tax general obligation bonds to pay all or part of the costs of certain transportation elements of the city's capital improvement program. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments on Council Bill 120224, Agenda Item 19? Excuse me, Agenda Item 19? We are now on Agenda Item 19, which is Council Bill 120224. Any comments? Seeing no hands raised, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of Council Bill 120224, Agenda Item 19?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Musceta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
Thank you so much. Council Bill 120224, Agenda Item 19, passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read the short title of item 20 into the record?
Agenda item 20, Council Bill 120196, an ordinance relating to the electric system of the City of Seattle, adopting a system or plan of additions and betterments to and extensions of the existing municipal light and electric power generation, transmission, and distribution system of the city.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move to pass Council Bill 120196, Agenda Item 20. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move to pass Council Bill 120196, Agenda Item 20. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. Are there any comments on Council Bill 120196, Agenda Item 20? Any comments on Agenda Item 20? Seeing no hands raised, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of Council Bill 120196, Agenda Item 20?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Thank you. Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Musceta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you so much. Council Bill 120196, Agenda Item 20 passes and the Chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read the short title of Item 21 into the record?
Agenda Item 21, Council Bill 120197, An Ordinance Relating to the Drainage and Wastewater System of the City of Seattle. The Committee recommends The bill pass with Council Members Musceta, Herbold, Gonzalez, Juarez, Lewis, Morales, and Strauss in favor, and Council Member Peterson abstaining.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments on Council Bill 120197, Agenda Item 21? Any comments on Agenda Item 21? Seeing no hands raised, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of Council Bill 120197, Agenda Item 21?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Sorry, I.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales? Councilmember Morales? Musceta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
Thank you so much. Uh, Council Bill 120197, Agenda Item 21 Passes and the Chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Uh, colleagues, Councilmember Morales did send me a message saying she might, uh, need to miss, um, a vote or two, uh, due to something on her end. Um, so, uh, I will just ask the clerk to keep calling her, um, her name, but if she doesn't respond, that is why. Will the clerk please read the short title of Item 22 into the record?
Agenda Item 22, Council Bill 120199, An Ordinance Relating to the Municipal Water System of the City of Seattle. The Committee recommends the bill pass With Council Members Musceta, Herbold, Gonzalez, Juarez, Lewis, Morales, and Strauss in favor, and Council Member Peterson abstaining.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments on Council Bill 120199, Agenda Item 22? Looking for comments, if any, on Agenda Item 22? Seeing no hands raised, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of Council Bill 120199, Agenda Item 22?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Musceta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you so much. Council Bill 120199, Agenda Item 22 passes and the Chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read the title of Item 23 into the record?
Agenda Item 23, Council Bill 120200, An Ordinance Relating to the Office of Housing Creating a New Fund in the City Treasury. The Council Budget Action was approved by the following vote With Council Members Musceta, Herbold, Gonzalez, Juarez, and Lewis, Morales, and Strauss in favor, and Council Member Peterson abstaining.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments on Council Bill 120200, Agenda Item 23? Any comments on Agenda Item 23? Seeing no hands raised, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of Council Bill 120200, Agenda Item 23?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Musceta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you so much. Council Bill 120200, Agenda Item 23 passes and the Chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read the title of Item 24 into the record?
Agenda Item 24, Resolution 32022, A Resolution Approving Interest Rates Set by the Seattle City Employees Retirement System Board of Administration for 2022. The Committee recommends City Council adopt the resolution With Council Members Musceta, Herbold, Gonzalez, Juarez, Lewis, Morales, and Strauss in favor, and Council Member Peterson abstaining.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments on Resolution 32022, Agenda Item 24? Looking for any comments on Agenda Item 24, if any? Seeing no hands raised, will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of Resolution 32022, Agenda Item 24?
Sawant? Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Musceta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you so much. Resolution 32022, Item 24 is adopted and the Chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read the title of Item 25 into the record?
Agenda Item 25, Resolution 32023, A Resolution Amending Resolution 31334 Establishing the City Council's Intent To Fund the Seattle City Employees Retirement System As Informed by the January 1st, 2021 Actuary Study. The Committee recommends the bill pass, Excuse me, the Committee recommends Council adopt the resolution With Council Members Musceta, Herbold, Gonzalez, Juarez, Lewis, Morales, and Strauss in favor, and Council Member Peterson abstaining.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any comments on Resolution 32023, Agenda Item 25? We are on Agenda Item 25. Are there any comments on that resolution? Seeing no hands raised, will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of Resolution 32023, Agenda Item 25?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Musceta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you so much. Uh, Resolution 32023, Agenda Item 25 is adopted and the Chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read the short title of Item 26 into the record?
Agenda Item 26, Council Bill 120201, An Ordinance Relating to City Funds Closing Certain Funds, Subfunds, and Accounts, Authorizing the Department of Finance and Administrative Services to Take Action Pursuant to Those Closures.
Thank you so much. I move to pass Council Bill 120201, Agenda Items 26. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. It's been moved and seconded to pass Council Bill 120201, Agenda Item 26. Are there any comments? Are there any comments on Agenda Item 26? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of Council Bill 120201, Agenda Item 26?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Musceta? Councilmember Musceta?
She looks like she may be frozen.
Okay. Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
Uh, the Council Bill 120201 passes, that's Agenda Item 26, and the Chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read the short title of Item 27 into the record?
Agenda Item 27, Council Bill 120202, An Ordinance Relating to the Traffic Code Modifying Fees Associated with Car Sharing, Clarifying Certain Definitions, And Establishing Seattle Department of Transportation Authority for Managing Free Floating Zone Service Areas.
Oh, excuse me, there's more to that.
Yeah.
That's okay, go ahead. We're gonna get through this together.
Thank you. The Committee recommends the Council pass the Council Bill with Council Members Musceta, Herbold, Gonzalez, Juarez, Lewis, Morales, and Strauss in favor, and Council Member Peterson abstaining.
Thanks so much, Madam Clerk. Appreciate it. Are there any comments on Council Bill 120202, Agenda Item 27? Any comments on Agenda Item 27? Okay, and just before I call the roll, I do wanna let, uh, colleagues and members of the viewing public know That Councilmember Musceta is having some technology difficulties. She is attempting to get back on, so, Um, if you do not hear her casting a vote, that is why. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of Council Bill 120202, Agenda Item 27?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Musceta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you so much. Council Bill 120202, Agenda Item 27 passes and the Chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read the title of Item 28 into the record?
Agenda Item 28, Council Bill 120223, An Ordinance Relating to the Financing of the Transportation Fund, Authorizing Interfund Loans Up to a Total Amount Of $15 Million from Multiple City Funds as Bridge Financing To Be Repaid by the Proceeds of a Future Surplus Property Sell. The Committee recommends the bill pass With Council Members Musceta, Herbold, Gonzalez, Juarez, Lewis, Morales, and Strauss in favor, and Council Peterson abstaining.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments on Council Bill 120223, Agenda Item 28? We are now on Agenda Item 28 and looking for comments, if any? Seeing no hands raised, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of Council Bill 120223, Agenda Item 28?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Musceta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Okay, thank you so much. Council Bill 120223, Agenda Item 28 passes and the Chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read the title of Item 29 into the record?
Agenda Item 29, Council Bill 120228, An Ordinance Relating to Taxation Increasing the Commercial Parking Tax And Amending Subsection 5.35.030.B Of the Seattle Municipal Code. The Committee recommends the bill pass.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments on Council Bill 120228, Agenda Item 29? We are now on Agenda Item 29. Does anyone have any comments? Hearing no comments, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of Council Bill 120228, Agenda Item 29?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Musceta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you so much. Council Bill 120228, Item 29 passes and the Chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read the title of Item 30 into the record?
Agenda Item 30, Council Bill 120222, An Ordinance Relating to the Financing of the General Fund, Amending Ordinance 126407 To Increase the Authorization of Interfund Loans Up to a Total Amount of $275 Million From Multiple City Funds to the General Fund as Bridge Financing To Be Repaid from Future Tax Proceeds and Other Anticipated Revenues. The Committee recommends the bill pass With Council Members Musceta, Herbold, Gonzalez, Juarez, Lewis, Morales, and Strauss in favor, and Council Member Peterson abstaining.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments on Council Bill 120222, Agenda Item 30? Here now on Agenda Item 30, are there any additional comments? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of Council Bill 120222, Agenda Item 30?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Musceta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you so much. Council Bill 120222, Agenda Item 30 passes and the Chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read the title of Item 31 into the record?
Agenda Item 31, Clerk File 314488, City Council Changes to the 2022 Proposed Budget And the 2022 through 2027 Proposed Capital Improvement Program. The Committee recommends the bill pass, or, excuse me, the Committee recommends The City Council approve and file the Clerk file.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I do understand that there is a amendment To this particular item being brought forward by Councilmember Herbold and, uh, Juarez. But my script does not indicate who would like to move that, so I'm, I'm calling on either Councilmember Herbold, there we go. I see Councilmember Herbold's hand raised, so I'm gonna Recognize Councilmember Herbold to make her motion, and should it receive a second?
Sorry, sorry that you did not receive an update that, um, that amendment is not being brought forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Well, there we go. Easy peasy. We'll just keep on going. That being said, are there any comments On, uh, Clerk File 314488, Agenda Item 31? Any comments on Agenda Item 31? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on, on the filing of Clerk File 314488, Agenda Item 31?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Musceta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you so much. Uh, the motion carries and Clerk File 314488, Agenda Item 31 Is approved and placed on trial. Okay, colleagues, uh, we are now at Item 32. This is, as previously indicated, the, uh, large bill that adopts, um, Uh, the vast majority of our city budget. If you'd like to get into the queue, Um, now is the time to raise your hands. I'll call on people as they raise their hands. Um, and we will, um, go from there. Will the clerk please read the title of Item 32 into the record?
Agenda Item 32, Council Bill 120211, An Ordinance Adopting a Budget Including a Capital Improvement Program And Position Modifications For the City of Seattle for 2022 And Creating Positions Exempt from Civil Service All By a Two-thirds Vote of the City Council. The Committee recommends the bill passes amended With Council Members Musceta, Herbold, Gonzalez, Juarez, Lewis, Morales, Peterson, and Strauss in favor, and Council Members Sawant opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. Uh, again, colleagues, I'm calling for comments on Council Bill 120211, Agenda Item 32. And I see that Councilmember Herbold has her hand raised. Thank you for using that function. You are recognized.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I'm going to focus my remarks on the efforts that I have been working with all of you to lead and with members of the public. We have, for the last year and a half, been working to broaden our city's definition of public safety to, with intention, include both traditional public safety investments while increasing funding for critical upstream investments and true community safety for all. This budget makes strategic investments in public safety so that law enforcement can respond to calls that only they are qualified to handle. That includes fully funding the Seattle Police Department Plan to hire 125 additional police officers, more community service officers, and technology resources necessary to support alternatives to police response and consent decree compliance. It includes funding and FTEs to address staffing and operational needs of our dispatch workers at 911 at the Community Safety and Communications Center, and includes funding for the Seattle Fire Department to add 20 additional firefighter recruits in 2022 in addition to the recruits that the mayor's proposed budget funded. As it relates specifically to community and safety, community safety investments, we have worked to build safety in neighborhoods from the ground up, laying the groundwork for non-law enforcement response to crisis, including nearly $4 million for need to allow for their modest expansion next year, $4 million sustaining the community safety hubs in West Seattle, Southeast Seattle, and a central district operated by the Community Safety, Seattle Community Safety Initiative, funding to support a work group with lived experience of domestic violence, recommend alternatives to incarceration that address misdemeanor, domestic violence, and funding to support expansion of the pre-filing diversion program of the City Attorney's Office so that we don't limit these diversion opportunities to only those under 25 years of age. We've made behavioral health investments because all data points through the pandemic, all data points to the pandemic having a significant impact on our behavioral health and anecdotally erupting into self-harm, abuse, assault, gunfire, and other forms of violence. This budget includes significant new investments in both mental health and substance abuse disorder, including $1 million to expand behavioral health services in Seattle Public Schools and community clinics for new mothers, seniors, and the uninsured, $1.5 million for mobile services for survivors of gender-based violence that help survivors stay safely housed.
I don't know, are you following the budget?
Councilmember Peterson? You could move, sorry. $5 million to match the county's investment in a new facility for people experiencing homelessness who need behavioral health supports. And also, investments in human services. As the pandemic stretches through its second year, we know that we must maintain a baseline of increased support for households who continue to struggle and the workers we rely on to help. That includes $600,000 for our wage equity study to address high turnover and compensate frontline workers for doing the work that we desperately need them to do. An additional $8 FTE for the Human Services Department, hire folks with accounting and financial skills. A recommendation of an outside accountant firm has been working with HSD on a plan to strengthen their financial controls. $1 million for services for workforce, affordable housing providers. The city's first investment in East African seniors by wraparound services at existing meal programs. $200,000 for Home for Good. Small investment will help up to 65 residents keep their homes when they lose state disability benefits. $5.1 million to sustain current levels of food support through most of 2022 to help families struggling with the ongoing pandemic stay healthy and nourish. Closing, I just want to repeat some remarks I've made in the past about the payroll tax. It's so important to note that this budget depends on the jumpstart payroll tax, which City Attorney Pete Holmes has so far successfully defended against a legal challenge from Greater Seattle Chamber of Commerce. After the city attorney submits written briefs due on December 15th, the next city attorney will take on responsibility for this case, and oral arguments will proceed under the direction of the incoming city attorney next year. If the defense is unsuccessful, the incoming mayor will be faced with closing cuts that could be $200 million or more in 2022. It may create a deficit for the 2021 budget, which used an interfund loan to be paid back with payroll tax revenue. This would make it nearly impossible to avoid across-the-board cuts. I think it's really important to place the action that this council is about to take within the context of this case moving forward. Want to close with, again, thanking the Budget Chair for all of her work pulling us together, moving in the direction that is the best for our city in this time. Want to thank the rest of my colleagues on the council. I appreciate the collegiality and sense of common purpose and common good, as well as all of the hard work that, behind the scenes, council central staff has done, day in, day out, for the last six weeks, as well as each of our office's personal staff, and want to, most of all, thank the community advocates, who, without them, we, I believe, would not be able to do as good of a job ensuring that this budget document is an expression of our values of this city. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Herbold, appreciate it. Okay, next up is, let me make sure I'm going in the right order. Next, we'll hear from, excuse me, Councilmember Morales, then Councilmember Sawant, and then Councilmember Lewis. And you are on mute, Councilmember Morales.
Thank you. Apologies. Thank you, President Gonzalez. I want to begin by acknowledging the hundreds of community advocates, workers, neighbors, and community organizations who really engaged with us in this process. I think their voice has been very important, as Councilmember Herbold stated. This was a hard budget year. In my opinion, it made harder by our reluctance to reject some very troubling budgeting practices by our police department. And I think it demonstrates that, as a council, we can find the resources in our general fund for important city priorities. That's always been my point of view in the conversation about reducing the police budget. As I said last week, you know, with the $19 million, we could fund 57 units of permanent supportive housing, 100 home zones, 190 new street outreach workers, forgiven back rent for 3,400 or so families, and provided nearly five transitional housing sites, like the one I had proposed for organizations like the Chief Seattle Club, and still funded six additional public toilets. So I do think it's important that we acknowledge why we haven't been able to fund more of the various services that would address the homelessness crisis and help move people off the streets and into more stable housing. That said, I am very excited with the budget that this council has, is about to pass. I think it's really important that we are investing $1 million and a half in public arts and creative industry programming, $375,000 for Black girls and young women, and for Black queer and transgender youth. We're investing a total of $750,000 in restorative justice programming so that our young people, our educators, and our communities can really gain a greater understanding of what it means to move away from punitive discipline and toward healing. And I want to thank my colleagues for supporting my amendment to create Juneteenth as a city holiday. Federal, state, and county employees already enjoy this holiday, so I'm excited that our city workers will also be able to mark this important day. And I'm very proud to be starting down the path to regular baseline inclusion of public toilet infrastructure development in the city. I think that's going to be a critical need, and I'm excited that we're starting in that direction. I also want to thank the neighbors from District 2 for their advocacy. Thanks to that advocacy, we'll see restored funding for culturally responsive after-school programs, $800,000 for community engagement support for the neighborhood planning process that is beginning in the Chinatown International District, as well as additional street cleaning and trash pickup support in the CID. We'll see $2 million more invested in sidewalk infrastructure. That's in addition to the $2 million for District 2 sidewalk infrastructure from last year. And we are getting funding to complete the bike and pedestrian trail at Cheasty Green Space. We're also funding Cookie Chest Park, the Lake Washington Boulevard expansion, prescription food pilot program for the Seattle Indian Health Board, as well as expanded mental and behavioral health services for the Duamish people, and to advance some environmental sustainability projects for the Duamish longhouse. As a council, our role is to deliver the resources needed to keep our city healthy and safe and to protect the most vulnerable in our community. And I want to say that, as a city that many across the country look to for innovative solutions to our municipal challenges, my hope is that next year, we can kind of lift our heads above the fog of COVID and really start thinking creatively about the kinds of forward-thinking policies that we can implement to stop displacement, to house our neighbors, and to create bustling, walkable neighborhoods that our community is really eager to see and to expand. I truly believe that if we have the courage to take kind of a sidestep toward innovation, we can plan for sustainability, for urban development, and for economic justice at the same time. I'm hopeful that we can work collaboratively with our new mayor to move these resources into community and deliver on the investments that can change the material conditions of our neighborhoods and really help our neighbors thrive. So I want to thank central staff, the city clerks, our IT department, and our comms team. I especially want to thank Ali Penucci and Yolanda Ho, who have been extraordinarily helpful, collaborative, and have offered, you know, innovative assistance through our budget process to our office as we think through how to move, how to move forward. I do also want to thank our facilities team. I've been coming in a couple times a week for the last several months now, and I've seen how much work goes into keeping City Hall safe, especially in COVID. So I want to thank Yaya and Chris for checking in on me once in a while in here. It gets kind of quiet at City Hall, but really appreciate the work that our facilities team is doing to keep City Hall safe. And finally, I do want to thank my staff, Alexis Turla, Darazel Touch, Devin Silvernail, and Imani Carey for bringing your passion, your smarts, and your deep organizing skills to the work that we do for the people of District 2. I'm very proud to have all of you on board and look forward to moving this budget forward and moving forward next year with some innovative policies. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Morales. Councilmember Sawant, please.
Thank you. I will be voting no on the budget. This vote is a vote on the budget as a whole, just to explain to members of the public, not on the amendments to the budget. If we were to only look at the amendments to the budget, there have been many progressive changes won by community organizers, particularly from the activists in the People's Budget and Solidarity Budget, and I voted yes on those amendments. Over the past year, the Renters' Rights Movement has organized to fight back against skyrocketing rents and other abuses, and through that organizing alongside our council office has won many important victories. We won the right to counsel, extensions of the eviction moratorium during the pandemic, six months' notice for rent increases, which just went into effect on November 8th, just cost protections for evictions, the ban on school year evictions of children and all public school workers, and economic relocation assistance worth three months of rent for renters economically displaced by rising rents. That is, when they're forced to move because their landlords have raised their rent by 10% or more. It's a law that, or it's a legislation that we'll take into effect in July of next year. In this budget, that many of the renters who fought to win those victories also organized with the People's Budget to win the funding necessary to enforce these new renter rights, to fully fund the right to counsel if you're a renter and you're facing eviction, while avoiding cuts to the funding for the renter organizing and education done by the Tenants Union and B Seattle. Community organizers in the Central Area won funding for the Clean Greens Fresh Produce Program, funding for the Garfield Superblock, and the technical changes to the Office of Housing's funding to make it possible for them to fund the New Hope Family Housing Project. This project and the purchase of Squire Park Plaza by Lehigh and the New Hope Community Development Institute are serious progress that have been won by the People's Budget advocates this year and are real priorities for preventing and reversing the displacement of Black working-class and low-income families from the Central Area. My office urges the Office of Housing to support these crucial projects without delays. We have won the funding in the budget, now they need to deliver. Homeless activists and organizers won another expansion of funding for tiny house villages, a proviso protecting the funding for tiny house villages so they cannot be used for any other purpose. This is crucial because year after year, corporate mayors have done everything in their power to stand in the way of establishing tiny house villages. So year after year, tiny house village funding has gone unused. This has predominantly been true under Mayor Durkin. And I am concerned that the Regional Homeless Authority will be no different because it is still part of the same political establishment, just another step removed from democratic accountability. And we already know of the ominous potential of the new Bruce Harrell administration as mayor to really, to really sort of crack down on homeless neighbors rather than actually providing humane services. We need to be crystal clear that homeless people themselves support tiny house villages in a way that is unlike any other homeless service in Seattle. Year after year, dozens of tiny house village residents and former residents who are now in permanent housing call into the City Council's public hearing to explain how tiny houses have transformed their lives, and I cannot say the same about any other service. This is not to say that other services are not important. They are. But tiny house villages are something special. Of course, there are problems in tiny house villages like everywhere, sometimes serious, sometimes tragic, because this is all happening as part of a deeply dysfunctional system of capitalism in the context of deep and increasing inequality. But through it all, tiny house villages have provided homeless residents with the community, safety, and dignity needed to begin to repair lives when you face the devastating experience of homelessness and overcome the crushing isolation and alienation that comes with homelessness. I urge the Regional Homelessness Authority to rapidly expand Seattle's tiny house villages, but I am extremely anxious that it is not going to happen, and that's why I urge all the activists from the People's Budget who are listening right now to keep in mind that we will need to continue fighting. My office stood with Nicholsville, Sherweal, and Camp Second Chance when they established tent city communities and tiny house villages before they had the legal authority to do so. Through the People's Budget movement year after year, we won Seattle's first funding for tiny house villages. We won the legislation permitting tiny house villages in the first place and expanding the number permitted in Seattle, and we will continue to fight for tiny house villages. And aside from that, also fighting to win the necessary funds for affordable social housing that Seattle needs to truly end homelessness. Similar to tiny house villages, Real Change organizers, working alongside the People's Budget Campaign this year, won funding for a new safe parking lot for people living in their vehicles. People, to be clear, people forced to be living in their vehicles because of the affordable housing crisis and skyrocketing rents, and also won the expansion of the garbage pickup and septic system pump-out services for people living in RVs on city streets. Most of the news coverage about the city budget deliberations has been about the police budget. If we were to only consider the objective material reality of police funding, the reality is, it has changed very, very little over the past two years. The overwhelming majority of the changes have been superficial accounting mechanisms. For example, the biggest change in the police budget has been the costs of the 911 call center and parking enforcement have been moved to other departments. There is no material change. There is only a change on how it is accounted for. The material changes have all been extremely marginal. However, if we consider those material changes... However, if we consider those material changes, there are deep lessons about how progressive change can be won and how big business maintains its power. Throughout history, it has been movements that made progressive change, not the machinations of the political establishment, not electing smartest technocrats, not the relationships between elected officials. None of this actually helps progressive change and very often than not can actually, more often than not, can be a hindrance to progressive change. Real change is driven by the balance of power in society as a whole, and particularly the organized forces of the working class prepared to fight, and those organized forces need elected representatives who will stand with them and boldly fight alongside them. The budget deliberations this year and last year could not be more different, and those differences are mirrored in cities across the country. One year ago, we were in the waning days of the Justice for George White movement. In that context, council members in Seattle and elected officials around the country claim to support defending the police and funding community-based safety alternatives. However, any sociologist will tell you that the one thing that has by far the greatest statistical impact on community safety and crime is the inequality in a society. And while it is important to note the impact of the movements in winning exciting and increased investments in community groups that do restorative justice work, there was no structural improvement in the overall inequality in society. In fact, we have to be sober. Over the last year, inequality has exploded, with billionaires getting even richer, with the majority of working-class people having suffered all the burdens of the COVID recession. Seattle rents are now on track to increase an unconscionable 40% this year. That is just inhumane. That economic factor alone fully explains any increase in both homelessness and crime. But the ruling class does not want working people to fight for rent control, a real expansion in affordable housing, and against inequality. So over the last year, there has been a brutal propaganda offensive against the BLM movement. We have seen this in all the big-business-owned mass media around the country, and it has gone hand in hand with the criminalization of the Black Lives Matter movement, also on display last week with the outrageous acquittal of Kyle Rittenhouse. I watched a mayoral debate, Seattle mayoral debate, just before the general elections, where every single question for the whole hour and a half posed to candidates was about crime and fear, and all about fear mongering. This is not an accident. This is how the ruling class uses their power to control the political narrative. So while the police budget is roughly the same this year as it was last year, once you pass through the accounting tricks, it is being described by elected officials very differently than it was last year. This year, council members have gone to great lengths to say that the police budget is actually growing slightly, which in real terms is true, but what's striking about this is that council members are going overboard to make sure that everybody knows that the police budget is actually growing. That is a real contrast from last year. The same police budget was described by the same council members as being on track to defund the police by 50%, which was not true. Rhetoric aside, it is actually business as usual. But both last year and this year, what is missing is the sort of investment in affordable social housing that would be needed to actually push back the wave of inequality sweeping our communities and what we know is coming, which is a tsunami of evictions. That is why I proposed increasing the Amazon tax to fully fund the Affordable Housing and Green New Deal building decarbonization work advocated for by the People's Budget and the Solidarity Budget. Unfortunately, seven of the nine council members voted against adding this budget amendment to the agenda this morning, with only Councilmember Herbold and myself voting yes. For the past year, council members have congratulated themselves on the progressive revenue generated by what they call Jump Start, but we need to be crystal clear. Every time progressive revenue is put to a vote, every time council members are put to a test, they vote no, except for one exception, that was in 2020, and that was because of the grassroots tax Amazon movement. This movement, which my office launched alongside a number of progressive labor unions and affordable housing organizations, had action conference after action conference, bringing hundreds and altogether thousands of ordinary people, working people, including struggling small business owners, Black Lives Matter activists, and housing justice activists, who all came together, discussed and debated openly the points that we had to discuss and debate to make this the movement that it became, which is a really strong movement. And in the midst of the Black Lives Matter protests, this tax Amazon movement collected 30,000 signatures on a viable ballot initiative to create a viable credible threat of an even larger big-business tax were the council to fail to act. Out of those 30,000 signatures, 20,000 signatures were collected at the protest themselves in 20 days. Suddenly, after that happened, suddenly council members renamed a Jump Start and pretended that they supported it all along, but we need to be clear, it was the grassroots movement that won the funding for the housing in the Green New Deal that exists in this budget, and it did so. This movement was able to do so despite repeated attempts by many council members to undermine that movement last year. And it is the political establishment who have prevented those big-business taxes from being large enough to meet the needs of working people. And this year, again, as we said, as I said before, even though there has been an attempt from my office, from the People's Budget Movement to increase that Amazon tax, that has been met with opposition. When we consider the budget as a whole, it does not do what it is necessary to do to meet the needs of regular working-class people being priced out of the city, and that is not acceptable. For that reason, I will vote no. As every year, I really appreciate the help of the city council central staff preparing budget amendments for my office and for the People's Budget. Some of those efforts resulted in budget amendments that passed and became part of the budget, and others resulted in budget amendments that did not pass but were still extremely important for setting the stage for future victories. Dan Eider, Tracy Ratsliff, Jeff Simms, Amy Gore, Kittle Freeman, Tom Miccell, Greg Dos, and Yolanda Ho all helped my office research and prepare budget amendments, all coordinated by Ali Panucci, and I greatly appreciate all your efforts. Thank you to all the staff members and community organizers and socialists in my office, Ted Verdon, Adam Zemkowski, Nick Jones, Alvin Muragori, Bial Akom, and Jonathan Rosenblum. And thank you to everyone who has been part of this year's People's Budget Campaign. Special shout out to the low-income seniors at the Rainier Court apartment complex who are so valiantly fighting their exploitative landlord seed and for rent control and who also testified in support of the People's Budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawant. Councilmember Lewis, you are next in the queue, and I do not see any other hands raised. Go ahead, Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to extend a couple of brief remarks to first indicate my very deep appreciation to Chair Moskata and her leadership in being incredibly accessible and accommodating throughout the budget process and hearing the various requests from my office and from people in my district and reconciling a lot of those requests into this final budget. We are already getting a lot of people reaching out who are very pleased that their efforts on the Battery Street Portal and on Market to Mohai and other projects have resulted in some of those priorities getting into the budget and are very grateful to see that when a community comes together with a project in mind and puts their shoulder to the wheel on it, something can ultimately come of that effort. And I really appreciate your process in allowing that to happen. You know, I do want to state that I am certainly voting in favor of this budget today and appreciate the process that's gone into it. I do want to signal that for all of us here on the council, I don't think I'm speaking just for myself, to vote in favor of this budget does not necessarily signify agreement with every component, but does signify a respect for the process, signify a willingness to go forward and have a budget that can keep the essential services of the city running, and the continuation of our local democracy, having gone through this very thorough process, and I look forward to voting for it. There certainly are some components I would have liked to see changed. I feel that I was heard in having the completely transparent ability to bring forward amendments, to have my say on them, and in some cases be successful, in some cases not. And I look forward to having the final passage on this to move forward and get to the work of implementing a lot of the things within the four corners of this budget in 2022. I want to close by also extending my thanks to Seattle City Council's central staff, always accessible, incredibly hardworking. I don't know when our central staff sleeps. They seem to always be there and ready whenever I have a question, and I really appreciate that accessibility, professionalism, and the high quality of the work product throughout this process and other endeavors. I want to particularly thank Ali Panucci as the budget manager for, you know, tetrising all of the different parts into place throughout this process to keep us on track, and congratulate our new central staff director, Esther Handy, on jumping in right at the beginning of this process and being able to keep everything running on time and meeting all of our deadlines. And I do finally want to, I want to thank my team in my office throughout this effort for shepherding proposals through, and every single one of them has multiple projects within this budget that are a result of their coalition building and diligent work in shepherding these projects. I want to thank Jacob Thorpe for his work liaising with the King County Regional Homelessness Authority and getting a lot of our homelessness additions, homelessness service additions into this budget, including tiny house villages, high acuity shelter, provisos related to peer navigation. Want to thank Camila Brown on my staff for her work on alternatives to policing and building up and developing the 911 call criterias to set the stage for future non-police alternative dispatch from our communications and public safety center. I want to thank Parker Dawson for being the point person on some of those district projects I mentioned earlier for the Battery Street Portal and Market to Mohai. And I want to thank Malik Faktamannavong for jumping in and really taking on a lot of the ministerial duties in the office as a replacement at the beginning of the budget cycle to really free up my other staff members to take on a bigger role in this budget process. So thank you, Malik. We really appreciate having you on board and your work in helping with our office's communication strategies. So thank you so much. With that, Madam President, I don't have anything else to add, and appreciate being able to make some remarks.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. I have Councilmember Peterson in the queue next, and again, for anyone else who'd like to give remarks, please do appreciate.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, as we know, the crafting of Seattle's budget occurs during most of the calendar year, starting with proposals from each city department. So I want to thank our mayor and her department heads and their teams and our city budget office under the leadership of Ben Noble. And here, of course, in the legislative branch, many thanks also to our city council central staff, our information technology team, the city clerks, the LA team in my office for their strong work, and many others for their work under the deadlines of our rigorous fall budget review process. I'm especially grateful to our budget chair's leadership and her grace in giving us the space to offer amendments and differences of opinion. As with all budgets that are crafted and amended by multiple teams with various perspectives and approaches, there are items that we and our constituents like, especially programs for those most in need in our council districts, and there are items that we might not like, especially as we debate how best to fund public safety, increase accountability, and deploy some effective alternatives to our traditional emergency response systems. Regardless, I believe we need a city budget approved and in place to keep our city government moving forward. And in keeping our city moving forward, I'm especially grateful for the adoption today of Council 120224, which was the companion legislation for Council Budget Action S.505A002 to build back better with a boost of bridge bonds. Bonds will enable us to finally address the growing backlog of vital bridge safety projects in the wake of the closure of the West Seattle Bridge and the subsequent audit of Seattle bridges that confirmed many key bridges are in poor condition. We were reminded of this vulnerability with the recent malfunctioning and temporary closure of the University Bridge, a multimodal bridge that may someday be the key to installing a new bus rapid-ride line. Bonds will enable us to fulfill more promises of the Move Seattle levy by restoring some of the seismic upgrade projects paused by S. Bonds can also increase safety on multiple bridges on the project list we received from S. Bonds can also boost the capital-heavy line items identified by the city auditor as being historically underfunded. Authorizing these bonds will enable the incoming administration to seize the window of opportunity when interest rates are at historic lows. Today, this city council delivers the authority for bridge bonds, and early next year, we expect the new administration to use that authority to keep our infrastructure safe, to keep our economy moving, and to keep our communities connected. I will be voting yes on today's amended city budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Are there any other comments on the budgets? And Councilmember Moskata, because you're the budget chair, I'm going to let you go last, so I'm looking for non-budget-chair committed comments. So Councilmember Strauss, please.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Chair Moskata. In this budget process, I set out with three broad priorities for District Six: investing in vibrant public spaces, addressing homelessness, and my top priority of providing citywide 24/7 response to mental health emergencies. For this top priority, colleagues, with your help, we secured $2.5 million to increase the size of Mobile Crisis Team so there is an appropriate first responder for people in crisis in our community. This funding follows our work and my amendment last year to provide the first-ever city funding for the Mobile Crisis Team, and it brings the total city investment from $0 two years ago to $3.5 million today. This budget also fully funds SPD's staffing and hiring plans, expands community service officers, Health One, sets up Triage One, and invests in the study of the level of staffing required to ensure public safety on our waterways. In District Six, this budget makes key investments, including $1 million to install the children's playground at Ballard Commons Park that was put on pause in 2019 by the pandemic, funding to create the redesign of Ballard Avenue for Cafe Street, that other districts can use that redesign for their districts, too. $3 million to clean up and remediate our parks, funding to expand both the Finney Neighborhood Association's hot meal program and the vehicle residency outreach program, and so much more for our district and our city. This was a difficult budget year, and I did not get everything I wanted in this budget, as others have said as well. And I'm proud to pass this budget that moves our city forward out of this pandemic and starts 2022 by working together to build the Seattle we know we can be. I want to take a moment to thank all of my colleagues who worked with me or supported my priorities or even disagreed with my priorities. A special thank you to Councilmember and Budget Chair Moskata for leading a smooth process that resulted in a balanced, fiscally responsible budget, setting Seattle up for success emerging out of an economic downturn and a period of political turmoil. I can't understate that enough. We have had a lot of political turmoil. We've seen, we experienced an economic recession, and we came out set up for success with the budget for us. I want to thank central staff, for everyone who worked with me on my amendments, Ben Noble, Julie Dingley, and your entire team. A huge thank you to you, and especially to my own team, Amanda, Noah, Kate, and Lena. Thank you for your hard work on behalf of District Six and for the whole city. Thank you, Budget Chair, and thank you, Council President. I look forward to voting yes on this budget.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Strauss. Any other council members interested in making comments on the budgets? All right. I do have some comments I'd like to make before I hand it over to Councilmember Moskata to make closing remarks on this particular item. So colleagues, today, the Seattle City Council will pass an important 2022 budget amidst a public health emergency unlike any other in this century. As I wrap up my second and last term on the city council, this is my final budget, and I'm grateful to Budget Chair Moskata and each of you who agreed to co-sponsor my budget items this year and over the past six years. I'm also grateful to current and former council members who have extended to me an opportunity to partner with you on your budget priorities as one of your cosponsors. For me, I'm humbled the Budget Chair Moskata included all but one of my budget priorities in her proposed balancing package, and I want to thank Budget Chair Moskata, who I am lucky enough to am lucky enough to call a colleague but even luckier to call a friend. And I also want to thank council central staff for their diligent work to identify and close a $15 million deficit that Mayor Durkin transmitted in her proposed budget, which was exacerbated by a revenue forecast update that means we have less resources to meet the many needs for a livable, equitable, and safe city for us all. I also want to thank my team, most of whom have been with me since my first term on this council, for all their tremendous work on this budget and on prior budgets. My Chief of Staff, Brian Thomas, my Deputy Chief of Staff, Cody Ryder, my Senior Policy Advisor, Veen Nguyen, and my scheduler, Maria Beltran, and my past staff, Orlando Cano, Genevieve Jones, and Roxanna Gomez, along with so many work-study interns. Without each of their ability to bring tenacity and dedication to this really challenging work, none of the millions of dollars of investments achieved in this 2022 budget and past budgets would have been possible. So, my deepest thanks and gratitude to each of them. This year's budget includes the following new and enhanced investments that we champion together with community partners and with your support, colleagues. We expanded childcare and safety net programs. There's an additional $1 million to support childcare providers, centers, and in homes that will support providers stay licensed and enhance their ability to expand childcare slots to serve our children and their families. We have $200,000 in this budget to scope and eventually launch a citywide guaranteed basic income pilot project. There's $661,000 to expand the Legal Defense Fund to increase legal aid services to an anticipated increase in asylum cases in Seattle. There's $500,000 towards the Tubman Health Clinic, a Black-led community health clinic that will provide culturally responsive healthcare to Seattle's Black community. And I was proud to be able to co-sponsor an additional $649,000 investment to strengthen digital equity and internet access across the city. This budget also has more transit and green infrastructure. We advanced $545,000 to prioritize community engagement and education and environmental impact studies in the city's next comprehensive plan update that will guide citywide growth policies for the next decade at least. We have $100,000 to strengthen climate resilience strategies by ensuring that smoke shelters or cooling centers are within 15 minutes of every resident and worker in Seattle. There's a $2.5 million proviso to require that the Seattle Department of Transportation detail in the citywide transportation plan how multimodal plans like Bicycle Master Plan, like the Pedestrian Master Plan, will be prioritized to pedestrianize and transform more of our right-of-ways into vibrant, public, carbon-free spaces. We've also addressed significantly additional funding for homelessness and mental health services. $600,000 in additional resources for the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. I was proud to be able to co-sponsor that with Councilmember Lewis and others. There's a new $5 million investment to establish a new high-acuity shelter in coordination with King County to provide behavioral health services, an additional $100,000 to expand outreach to our neighbors living in vehicles, $600,000 to expand and enhance services in tiny house villages, $100,000 to expand hygiene services for Camp Second Chance, $600,000 for study of wages in our local human services workforce, and a boost for worker pay for those on the front lines addressing our city's most pressing humanitarian crisis. We've also invested in public safety interventions and a trauma-informed crisis response system. I was able to advance a proviso on the Seattle Police Department's budget to preserve underspend from salary savings that can be reinvested in community-based alternatives to law enforcement. We also have $1.8 million proviso in the city attorney's office to ensure that pre-filing diversion programs and pre-trial diversion programs and the Let Everyone Advance the Dignity program will continue to be part of the work we do as a city, regardless of who is the city attorney. I'm proud of these achievements, even though, by admission, we did not achieve across the board success, including the close defeat of my Abrogation Amendment that would have advanced transparency and budget accountability within the police department. But alas, the future council will continue to struggle withholding the police department accountable to spending within its limits, in large part because the failure of my Abrogation Amendment means the future mayor and permanent chief will have the budget by which to hoard nearly $20 million worth of general fund dollars during a historic, once-in-a-lifetime global pandemic that continues to ravage our most vulnerable community members. But this is a battle that will most assuredly be for each of you to consider and debate and decide in the near future. So, in closing, I'm grateful to have had such a meaningful opportunity to work with each of you, your staff, council central staff, including our new Director Esther Handy, and our fearless Budget Manager, Ali Panucci, also Patty Wiggren, City Clerk's Office, IT, Communication Staff, and the Seattle Channel. This Thanksgiving, I have much to be grateful for. And amongst those items for which I am grateful, I give thanks for all of your hard work and your public service. Thanks to each of you for the opportunity to serve the people of this city together as a strong city council. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to hand it over to you now.
Council President, thank you very much. Thank you for your service and your leadership on council. Thank you for the opportunity to have worked with you, not just on this budget, but with your leadership and partnership on the Seattle Rescue Plan. And colleagues, thanks again to all of you for the work that you've put into this budget. I will be very brief because the Council President eloquently summarized the aspects within this budget that I am so proud of, and I'm so thankful for all of your ongoing participation to have been able to get to this point today, to have that extensive summary that you just heard reflected in our final budget as we pass this. The Council 2022 budget responds to these most pressing crises facing our city in the wake of COVID and in the wake of rising income inequality by investing a historic amount of funding in affordable housing and sheltering more of those who are experiencing homelessness and ensuring equitable economic recovery, investing in public safety, and, as Councilmember Juarez noted, getting back to the basics, making sure that we're investing in libraries and parks. This council budget rightly invests in more emergency reserves while prioritizing spending limited public dollars to serve, care for, and support working families in our local economy. Thanks very much to the foresight of this council to continue to support the implementation plan from the Jump Start Progressive Revenue. We are able to leave with progressive values in this budget, act with urgency to ward off any deep cuts, and protect our most vulnerable in this time of compounding public health crises. I am proud, I'm proud of the ways in which we have come together as a council, and proud of the ways in which we are coming together as a city. We are making important decisions for our city in the face of very bad economic forecasts received just weeks ago, and as Chair, I have always been committed to a transparent and accountable budgeting process. After reviewing the nearly 200 amendments to the proposed budget, colleagues, together, we have crafted a budget that invests in the areas of most need. I want to continue to thank my council colleagues and sincerely express my appreciation for your difficult work that you've put into making sure that our most urgent needs are met in this budget cycle, and we will continue to work to address those needs that will potentially manifest in 2022. We will be more prepared to do so because of the work you have done to protect the reserves and to prepare for those situations that may be on the horizon. We'll also work with the next administration to address any emerging needs and work swiftly to make sure that our city has what it needs to be responsive to the tremendous gamut of needs across our great city of Seattle. We've worked tirelessly over the last few months, but we've also worked tirelessly over the last two years in the midst of this pandemic to truly identify every dollar that could be used in 2022, get it out the door as fast as possible, and in partnership with the state partners and our federal congressional members to respond to the emergency that COVID has not created but has made worse in terms of economic instability and housing instability. I greatly appreciate the work you've done here, colleagues. I'm proud of the investments in stability, safety, and care for Seattleites. We are adjusting for some of the most unprecedented times our city, our country, has ever faced, and we are doing this by investing in affordable housing, responding to the homelessness crisis, creating equitable and safe communities, and creating a future that our city can be proud of by investing in economic resilience. I look forward to working with you to implement these important components, and I want to thank you again for all of your work. I did my thank yous this morning, Madam President, but I want to again thank central staff and my team, who have been just tremendous. So, thank you all for your consideration, and I do look forward to passing this with your support today.
Thank you, Councilmember Mosqueta. With that, we are ready to take a vote. So, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of Council Bill 120203, Agenda Item 32?
Sawant?
No.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Mosqueta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Eight in favor, one opposed.
Thank you so much. This script is really long. Okay. The bill passes, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Okay. We are now at item 33. Will the clerk please read the title of item 33 into the record?
Agenda item 33, Council Bill 120203, An Ordnance Relating to the Levy of Property Taxes, Fixing the Rates and/or Amounts of Taxes to Be Levied and Leveing the Same Upon All Taxable Property, Both Real and Personal, in the City of Seattle, to Finance the Departments and Activities of the City Government and to Provide for the General Obligation Bond Interest and Redemption Requirements for the Year Beginning on the First Day of January 2022. And ratifying and confirming certain prior acts, the committee recommends the bill pass with Councilmembers Mosqueta, Herbold, Gonzalez, Juarez, Lewis, Morales, and Strauss in favor and Councilmember Peterson abstaining.
Thank you so much. Okay. Are there any comments on Council Bill 120203, Agenda Item 33? Any comments on Agenda Item 33? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of Council Bill 120203, Agenda Item 33?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Mosqueta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
Thank you so much. Council Bill 120203, Agenda Item 33 passes, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read the title of item 34 into the record?
Agenda item 34, Council Bill 120204, An Ordnance Authorizing the Levy of Regular Property Taxes by the City of Seattle for Collection in 2022, representing an increase above the regular property taxes levied for collection in 2021, and ratifying and confirming certain prior acts, the committee recommends the bill pass with Councilmembers Mosqueta, Herbold, Gonzalez, Juarez, Lewis, Morales, and Strauss in favor and Councilmember Peterson abstaining.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments on Council Bill 120204, Agenda Item 34? Any comments on Agenda Item 34? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of Council Bill 120204, Agenda Item 34?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Mosqueta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
Thank you so much. Council Bill 120204, Agenda Item 34 passes, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Okay, colleagues, is there any further business to come before the council?
Madam Chair, we have the MPD meeting, so do, what would you suggest as far as a break between now and when we, and I don't suspect it will go long, but...
Yeah. I was going to make comments about that right before we adjourn.
Okay, sorry.
Let me, no, it's okay. Let me, let me make sure there isn't any other further business to come before the council that requires motions before we get to that. I see your yay sign. Okay. Councilmember Morales, your hand is raised.
Is this the good of the order, part of the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to request to be excused from full council on December 6th and from all committee meetings except for my own during that week as well. That's when I will be in naught.
Okay. If there's no objection, Councilmember Morales will be excused from city council meetings on Monday, December 6th. Hearing no objection, Councilmember Morales will be excused on December 6th. Is there any other further business to come before the council? Okay, colleagues, this does conclude the items of business on today's agenda. As mentioned by Councilmember Juarez, we do have a meeting as the Seattle Parks District Board that is scheduled to occur at the conclusion of this meeting. The Clerk's Office is asked to have 15 minutes to be able to transition, and I think our good folks with tech could use a break as well, and we probably could too. So, with your agreement, I'd like to suggest that we allow for that 15-minute break and reconvene at 5:00 PM. Any objections to that? Okay, we will reconvene at 5:00 PM. Again, just as we did this morning, you do not need to leave the Zoom room. The credentials are the same for council members, so you can step away for 15 minutes. Just mute and stop your video, and when you're ready, you can come back. So, with that, colleagues, our next regularly scheduled city council meeting is on Monday, November 29, 2021, at 2:00 PM. I will see you all in about 15 minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.